I'll call this work session to order. What city staff do we have tonight?
Hello, Mayor and Council. You have Jamie Stickell, Economic Development Director.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And so tonight, we will be reviewing the proposals the city received for the requests for expressions of interest for the former Canby Public Library located at 292 North Holly Street. And this RFEI, Request for Expressions of Interest, was opened during the month of February. As background, the city has opened the Request for Expressions of Interest two times prior in 2019. In 2017 and 2018, after much discussion, it was decided to retain ownership and create a public market and office space in that former library building. In the summer of 2019, we began work with LRS Architects, who had previously completed renderings on the building as part of Clackamas County 3D Modeling Grant that we received. The city also applied for and was awarded an Oregon Main Street Grant for $200,000 for the facade work on that building. In early winter, we rendered some early cost estimates, which were substantially over budget. But at that same time, we received renewed interest from three parties on the former library space. At the January 15th City Council meeting, after much discussion, we reopened the Requests for Expressions of Interest for the former library. So tonight, you will be reviewing four unique and thoughtful proposals. I have met with and spoken to each of the proposers, and I am excited to present you with the following. We received proposals from Neighborhood Health Centers, Oregon City Brewing Company, which is proposing the Beer Library, Ray Kahoot, Thelma's Place. And unless there's any questions for me at this time, we can move on to the spreadsheet of details for the proposals, which you have immediately following my staff report in the packet. So these are very, very quick glance at what the robust proposals had outlined. So Neighborhood Health Centers open to negotiations. They are here in Canby, over in the Highway Market area. They anticipate improvements of $100 to $125 per square foot. They would like to do, their proposed use is 12 exam rooms, seven dental rooms, three offices, pharmacy, meeting room, reception area, resource room, and community room. And they, you know, at this time, just getting an update from their broker yesterday, at this time, they feel like more than ever, it's time to do something because of the coronavirus. Their current clinic operates Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, eight to five, and Wednesdays is their late day, although they would say that, they said that expanded space would allow for more open hours. The Oregon City Brewing Company Beer Library, they are proposing $10,000 purchase of the building, but then owner-funded roughly $1.5 million improvement. They'd like to do a brewery with three indoor food carts, two retail spaces along Northwest Third, an interior atrium with courtyard, and their current hours of operation in Oregon City, Monday through Thursday, 11 to 10, Friday, Saturday, 11 to 11, and then Sunday, 11 to 9. And then they note that they're open 360, three days a year. Ray Kahoot is offering 167,000 outright purchase of land and building. He did not explicitly outline the cost and responsibility of the tenant improvements. He's proposing a flex space with small retail businesses built to suit, and interior space used for farmer's market type vendors. So I think if you'll refer to your packet with the photos, very similar to a public market of sorts. And those hours of operation would be dependent upon the tenants that he were to receive. And then Thelma's Place, they're offering $25,000. In the proposal, it said lease or lease to own, and I confirmed today that that $25,000 is what they would like to offer for an outright purchase of the building. They did not explicitly outline cost or responsibility of tenant improvements. They are proposing that it will be used for respite care for their memory loss patients, childcare, after-school care, and community-based uses for off-hours, and their hours of operation Monday through Saturday, and then days and nights. And so then I would just open it up if there were, for dialogue, and if there are any questions you have of me.
So I have one question on the OC Brewing Company. As I read through their stuff, it looked like they are talking about a $200,000 grant that we would be matching.
Right.
Can you, can you run through that a little bit?
Yeah, so that, what they're referencing, they had seen that we received the $200,000 Oregon Main Street Grant. And I have been in contact with the state to say, you know, what our initial plans were are not going to work for us, that public market. The grant itself can be a pass-through grant, so it's for Main Street organizations, which we hold a Main Street affiliation. And so it could have been a tenant that was not city-related. So depending on the use, it is possible that we could use that Oregon Main Street grant from the state towards the facade renovations. And they were basically open to continuing to talk to us about what that looks like. So knowing, noting and knowing that it's not going to be the same as the public market renderings we provided them, but, you know, if it is doing the things that we need it to do, like activating that space and, you know, filling hours in the day, that those kinds of things, I think they're, they're open to dialogue.
Thank you.
Tim, are you muted?
I use an entirely different conferencing. The other 12 days will, forget this one has a different button. My nerdness is slipping. Jamie, I asked you earlier to remind us about the appraisal that we had done two or three years ago. So I recall, it was 900 and some thousand and change.
952,000 was the proposal, or I'm sorry, the appraisal from, it was probably, I think, 2016 when we received that.
And we're at just over 11,000 square feet?
Just under, 10,901.
Just under, okay. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I apologize to Counselor Parker. He asked me earlier in the week about what's our framework for decision, and I didn't get back to him. And usually on these things, we've kind of approached it as, what's the exit plan for the city, right? Do we want to sell and be done, or do we want to have more of an influential position to take with who goes in there, even partnering with them, et cetera, et cetera? So that's kind of one thing we can look at tonight. Now, interestingly, with the four proposals we have, there isn't a clear sell it and be done winner, right? Even Ray's offer is a small fraction of the property's appraised value. Although, you know, we have the freedom to say, yeah, it's fine. We know the building's not in the best of shape. It's a good price, take it and go. The other three are, I kind of laugh, I can't decide whether to call them token offers or desire for a donation, because that's really about all they are. They're just very small offers on the property. What they really want is the city just to give them the building and let them go and do great things with them. And we can decide to do that, right? We can, we can look at these and say, there's one here that we think is of such outstanding value to the city, good for the downtown nucleus, that it's, it's worth making the donation, so to speak, and away we go. If we were to do that, I would encourage us to do as Rick Robinson did when we had the previous proposal on this property, and also as we did for the Dahlia, and we do it as a performance contract. So I have no interest in giving away the property or selling it for a token only to have it sit and be flipped later, right? That would not be the responsible action for us to take. We can do that, right? So if we were to go with, with any of these offers, I would encourage us that we tie it to performance of making sure those improvements get done and done in a timely fashion. One thing about the OC Brewing Company is they explicitly said they have, they want us to have no expectation on when the improvements would take place. They would sit indefinitely. One last little point I'd like to make, and then I'll be quiet, is if we do go down the route of selling for a very token amount, I would not be interested in further contributing to that through the facade improvement program. I think we will have done above and beyond just on a token price. And I'll hand the talking stick to someone else.
Sarah? Counselor Spoons, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Counselor, Counsel President Dale said. I am, in terms of just comparing idea to idea, I mean, I think for me, clearly, the OC Brewing activates the space the best, makes our downtown more of a destination, but obviously, they're offering us very little. And they have the concern about how current events have impacted their ability to proceed. But I definitely think that if any, any one of these require some sort of performance contract, because none of them give us close to what the value of the property is. The one thing that, that I liked the OC Brewing did, though, was a commitment to a certain amount of tenant improvements. And if we can, if we can have a conversation with them about how long it would be, and we probably have, we'll have more information in the next couple of months over when we'll be able to get back to business than they did when we received this information, and they had said no expectations. But because they're committing to a certain amount improvement in the building, I think it gives us an idea of what we can anticipate in tax revenue, right? Whereas other people aren't committing necessarily anything. So even if they pay us less for the building, if the property value goes up enough that it gives us greater tax revenue over the long term, that's not necessarily, you know, compared to someone who's not committing any amount of money, at least we can anticipate that while we may take less on day one, over the course of the next decade, we'll make up for that in tax revenue, in some capacity. I mean, I don't, I can't say I'm, any of these, like Tim said, none of these are easy decisions or, you know, I won't even say I feel great about any of them as they are, so.
Counselor Varwick?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, if we're, I echo a lot of what both Counsel President Dale and Counsel said. If we look from, you know, the tenant improvement column to the right, the OC Brewing Company looks, you know, looks great on paper for, for what they want to do. I really like, you know, I think back to what, what our goal was with that property, and we've always said we want to activate the space, and I think that best activates it. If we look from the price column, I don't like any of them, honestly, because I, I think that, I don't want to say, you know, insulted by the prices, but, but really, I don't want to be taken advantage of either. We have a duty to take, you know, that's a taxpayer-owned building, and so we have a duty to the taxpayer to make sure that we do right with it. Obviously, it needs a lot of work, but I would love to see, as Tim had mentioned, some kind of tie it somehow to, if we go with like that OC Brewing one, before we would sell the building for the price, the tenant improvement would have to be done. Something similar to that. My fear would be to sell it for $10,000, nothing ever happens, and then somebody purchased, you know, who purchased the building then decides to sell it for a million dollars four years from now. You know, I don't think that's right. So there has to be some kind of, you know, performance tied to that of, you know, if you don't do the tenant improvements, then you can't buy the building. That's just my thought.
Anyone else? So last time we talked about this, I, I was a firm proponent of holding on to the piece of property. And I'd like to say that right now, at this time, with the craziness that's going on out there, more than ever, I think right now is a good time to hold on this. Now, what you, we could do with these guys is go back and ask them if they're willing to do a lease. That way, we can, we hold the building, we own it, we get money for it on a monthly basis. I don't know if we're going to get the 95 cents a square foot for office down here like we are in Twalton and Beaverton, but even if it was 75 cents a square foot on a, on a long-term lease, 10 years, 15 years, then we, you know, we're holding on to that property and get through these times, then we can make a decision later. That's just my sense. Thanks, Counsel Burie. Appreciate that. Counsel Spoons?
Yeah, can we just get some clarification from Jamie on, there are certain improvements that would have to be made before anyone leased the space, even if we held it just in office. And I know some of the budget that we talked about in our initial one would think, were things tied directly to our original vision. Can you give us an idea of if we did what Counselor Burie said, you know, hold it and lease it in some capacity, we would still have to do some basic improvements to the building? What would that look like?
I think that that would be, you know, obviously bathrooms and some ADA. There were some ADA aspects to that original cost estimate that LRS acquired for us. And then, you know, there are certain things, and I don't know if this is exactly what you mean, but like doors and windows, the windows are all, well, now they're painted, but some of them have been damaged, so there's, you know, fog in them. And we have, the city has taken some aspects of the wall out so that we could see and show what was behind the walls, so that we could, when, when people, like these four proposals came through, they were able to see, you know, the senator blocks behind, behind the false wall. Anyway, so, so things of that nature. I don't know how much it would cost, and our estimates, you know, are at this point about six months old, we'll just say. So that, that might have even changed, even if we were to parse out what is needed for immediate upgrade.
So Jamie, and maybe for this more of a question for the group, the, we can break this, break this down and look at it from the terms of what, which concept do we want to see in that building, and then move forward and have those conversations on price or the other pieces that we want to work out. I don't think that needs to necessarily be decided on right now, tonight, as much as it's, do any of these four proposals jump out at us to pursue and move into the conversation about price, whether that be purchase, lease, rent to own, whatever. I think that piece of the conversation may, may come after we decide the concept. Thoughts? Counsel Parker?
Well, this reminds me of the book that I saw in the secondhand store that had never been sold called How I Took $1 Million in Real Estate and Turned It Into $25 in Cash. I'm not willing to sell below market rate. That's stupid. If, if we can't get out of it what it's worth, then let's take it off the market. People on the council know better than me about some of the real estate rules and what you can and cannot do in a contract. It would have to be a pretty exotic public-private partnership for us to make sure that somebody with a big plan came in and actually did the investments. Tim double-checked me on this, but at $1 million, the, this county's, the city, the city of Canby share in its taxes, if in fact, let's say, Oregon City Brewery were to go into it, and, and the, and the building would be assessed at $1 million. That's, that's $3,000 a year total. That's, that's all we, we would get from it. So we're not going to get rich on taxing a million-dollar building. So my vote is to reject all of these, send a clear message that we are, we're not a bargain basement. This isn't art from Rack. We're not going to be selling this stuff cheap. And, and I'm more inclined, unless we can get the full value of this property, I'm more interested in, in leasing it, maintaining control of the ownership. And one model that I've always liked is with a local businessman who came into town several years ago, and used the same model for all the restaurants he's ever owned, which is 8% of the gross. And so whatever goes in there, first year, you're getting things open, you're not making any money, you don't pay anything back in lease. But as your fortunes increase, so do ours. So that's the financing package and the advantage I see to lease. And at some date, this property is going to be worth more than $10,000. It may be worth more than a million dollars. And we will go down in history as the council who sold a million-dollar piece of real estate for $10,000. So my vote, reject them all.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Parker. Counsel Hensley, did you unmute? Did you want to comment?
Yeah, I would concur, actually. Of all the proposals, the only one that even interests me was the renderings from OC Brewing, but the numbers, I did not like at all. I don't like any of the financial proposals at all.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Spoons?
Yeah, so I could get behind rejecting them all. My hesitation, not that I think any of them are acceptable in their current form, is that, you know, we've gone down this path a couple of times, and I also don't want it to be vacant forever, right? I think at some point, we need to get this space back on the tax rails in some capacity, letting it sit empty for how many years? It's already been almost four years now, but we go four more years, it's just going to become more, like, it's going to get dilapidated, it's going to cost us more money to bring up to saleable condition. So finding that balance is really important to me. I can get behind rejecting everything. The only one I was excited about was OC Brewing, but I obviously have no interest in selling the building for $10,000. I would be interested in seeing if there's a way we can work with them. So my concern is having it remain vacant, because this is now the third time that we're discussing what we could do with it, and, you know, probably not having an acceptable offer. My other concern is leasing it, how much money it's going to cost us to make it in a condition where we can lease it. So I'm also, I'm not interested in selling it for $10,000. I'm also not interested in putting $500,000 into it, right? And so like, I, I don't know that there's a great answer in this case, but I don't want to see it vacant. I don't want to put half a million dollars into it. So I'm hoping that there's an option to go back to maybe our top two choices and see if there's another path with them that is not this path. I don't see any, I don't see any reason to not go back to them and see, say, you know, we can't do what you asked, but, but we're interested if there's, if there's a way we can come to terms. That's a convoluted way of saying I don't like any of them. I also don't like doing nothing, and I don't want to put more money into it.
Yeah, Counsel Spoons, I, I'm in agreement with you on that piece. Like, it's that, how do I get it, the best use, as cheap as possible, as quickly as possible, and still make a million dollars? The, of the concepts for me, that's why I posed the question, is I like the idea of OC Brewing Company going into that space. I think it activates the downtown the way we want it. I think it creates a great, greater draw into downtown. I think it does create an extension, being kitty-corner from the park, creates an extension of their, could be a patio area or just an outside space. I don't like, I think, the $10,000 purchase price. At first, I read it, I thought it was a typo. But, you know, that's, that's part of the dealing, right? And that's why I posed the question, which concept, and then do we go back and say, okay, guys, like, come on, you know, the, the building's appraised at, you know, $900,000. We're missing the mark here by a little bit. So, you know, what does that look like? And how do we get closer to something, as Counsel Parker was talking about, that we can at least maybe not go, yeah, I, okay, I can do that number and not feel like we're, you know, getting taken out back and whipped and beaten. So that's, so, concept-wise, I like OC Brewing. That's what I would like to see.
We're muted?
I, I think we got to go back and, or, then the next piece is, what does that number look like? Yes.
I'm, I'm trying to interrupt because I, I was trying to intuit when you guys were going to start coming up with a price. You can use executive session when you're talking about price.
Right, no, I know.
I wouldn't play your hand. Tonight, we're trying to look at if you are interested in certain uses of this, but if, if you start playing your hand in price, you won't get the benefit of exec session.
No, I understand, I understand. That's why, again, I tried to break it up into two pieces. Which concept do we like? Then great, then we got to have another meeting to talk about, what do we want to try to offer? Counsel Varwick?
I think if we're just looking at concept, I think we're getting close with the OC Brewing Company. I think it does exactly what we've asked for that building to do and activates the space. I really like the idea that it gives some additional tenant spaces. Hopefully, those are affordable for, you know, young and just starting out businesses. I really like the way that it looks. I really like the way that, you know, they've kind of drafted that up. So I think if we're looking at which concept, I think that's the winner in the concept, followed maybe by Ray Kahoot. But I, you know, I think when we talk about activating those spaces, I don't think that Neighborhood Health Center or Thelma's Place businesses are, I don't think those activate the space the, the way that we would want it to. So I think we should follow up, you know, with one of those other two, if we're looking for concepts to follow up on. I don't think the first and the fourth there, I don't think those are going to be anything that we would be interested in using that space for. So as far as concept, I'd say, let's, let's see what we can do with OC Brewing.
I agree. I like the OC Brewing proposal the best, except for the number. So if we're going to have a conversation going forward, I'd like to see it be with them.
Okay, I saw Counsel Spoons headed, nodding affirmatively. Counsel Parker? Okay, nodding affirmatively. Counsel Burie, did you have a comment? I did. So I just wanted to go back to Counsel Spoons' comment real fast about not wanting to put, you know, a half a million dollars into it in order to lease it. So typically with a lease, we give them an allowance that, because any one of these that were to go in there, they're going to have to remodel it to fit their style anyways. And so the last thing you want to do is go in there and upgrade the ADA on the restrooms and that kind of stuff, and then try and lease it to them, because their floor plan might not align with that, if that makes sense. So we just give them an allowance, and, and I'm not going to say a number right now of what the normal allowances are, but it's way less than the 500,000, especially for a 10,900 square foot area. So that is definitely something that we could look at, and it's, it's really not going to be that much out of our pocket. And I think in the long term, we'll be holding on to that building, so. Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that insight. Counsel President Dale, you're unmuted, unmuted? Did you have something to add?
Just giving you the thumbs up. That's the one concept plan that interests me the most. I think it's a pretty easy conversation for Jamie to bounce back and see, you know, really where their headspace is. We can decide whether we need an exec session to set our own boundaries first or not.
Jamie, it does, so it looks like we've got, at least from a proposal standpoint, that OC Brewing seems to be the, the company or the group that we want to pursue some conversation with. Do you have enough to move forward?
Yes, I think that we have enough to move forward. You've provided pretty clear direction on the concept being great and a good fit, and the price being something we need to work on. And I think, you know, about OC Brewing, but also about all of them, they were so excited about that space and excited about downtown, and particularly today, where we stand in the world, I think that that's a really exciting thing, that we still had strong proposal ideas, and that we just need to work a little bit to come together. But I think that's what those negotiation times are for. So I will connect with them all, and I, I think they're probably all watching along, but I'll connect with them all and let them know the direction that we're going at this time.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Jamie on this particular issue tonight? Counsel Parker?
There may be a couple of ideas. There may be a couple of, um, ideas that we've got rolling around, if you have a chance to do a call down during the week, or send some things in. Respecting, uh, what our attorney, uh, had to say, that, uh, uh, we might be able to forward some ideas to you, Mayor, and, um, do a little noodling there, uh, so that we don't give away our strategy.
No, I, I, I agree with that, I think that's a great approach, um, 'cause I think we've got some real good insight here from a, a number of, of you, in terms of this world a little bit, um, from a, you know, real estate development standpoint, um, you know, I do think that we're gonna, um, I think it's, yeah, let's leave it at that for now, I've got, before I say anymore, I don't want to get too far over my skis. Um, but I think, uh, I think we've got good, good starting point, um, and I think we reconvene some ideas, and bouncing to me, Jamie and I can put those together and start moving forward and see what we can get done here sooner than later. Okay.
Great.
Great, good job, everyone, um, I'm excited. Jamie, anything else on, on this topic tonight?
I don't think so, thank you so much for your time and, uh, the discussion, I really appreciate it.
All right. I will adjourn our work session, and, uh, we'll reconvene at seven o'clock for our city council meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Is Gordon ready there in TV land?
Yes, he is.
All right, we're going here in five, four, three, two, and one. Good evening, Camden. Welcome to a regular Camden City Council meeting. Again, brought to you through modern technology. Trying to keep the city moving forward and not letting COVID slow us down by any stretch of the imagination. So just to give everyone an update, City Council has been working since about 6:15 this evening. We had a work session where we were looking at some proposals for the old library space. So that was a good conversation and I think we've got a good choice to move forward with. So we'll stay tuned for more on that or you can go back and listen to the work session if you wish. And see how that went. We're moving to communications this evening. Amanda and team.
We don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is citizen input and community announcements. So quite a bit here this evening, so bear with me. First couple of things. It's National Nurses Day and I thought it was fitting to call that out based on much of what is going on in our world right now. Our nurses are running the front lines. I recently moved into a position where I work in senior living and adult care. And our nurses are pertinent and important to what we do and the care of our residents. But in this day and age of the virus and COVID-19, it may have been crucial on the front lines of this virus in taking care of those that have come down with it. So those that are nurses, thank you. My mom's a nurse, my aunt's a nurse, my mother-in-law is a nurse. My aunt-in-law, does that count? Is that right? So my what is a nurse. Pretty amazing people. So if you know a nurse, send them a message and thank them. The other piece I just wanted to draw attention to was the Camden Center. Camden Center is passing out, distributing a tremendous amount of food to the Camden community and they need volunteers. Last, I was talking with Ray Keen earlier today and yesterday and they're moving a lot of food. Almost, I think, a thousand families last week were served. They moved almost eight or nine pallets of food from various grocery store companies that had donated food to make sure that things were happening. So go to their website, thecandemcenter.com and they've got a computerized schedule that you can click into, sign up for some time and help them out in distributing food to Camden, Camden families. So moving into some other, I think, a little bit headier topics. So last week, I want to address the opening, restaurant opening over the weekend. Last week, Chief Smith and I stood at the Camden Community COVID Update and laid out how cities and how, sorry, laid out how cities and how this city specifically would respond if there was a business to open beyond the scope of the governor's executive order. We chose to read last week, I read this last week because there were rumors of businesses that would potentially open on May 1st in response to or in protest of Governor Brown's executive order. I had hoped that by doing that, we would have prevented businesses from going this route. Unfortunately, we did not. So this past weekend, we did have a restaurant decide to open for sit-down service. This resulted in a complaint into the Camden Police Department who responded accordingly. The resulting complaint and visit by Camden PD resulted in the business having, understanding the situation. They were very cooperative with our police department and then returning to doing just takeout as usual. Just want to also clear up any other further confusion on the issue. For me, it was not a, sorry, I lost track of my notes here. I am not in agreement with this restaurant or any other business opening outside the parameters of the executive order. As your mayor, I took an oath, as did each of our city councillors, to follow the laws of our city, our state and our country. Even the ones that I or we may not agree with, though I do understand the situation that the businesses are facing. I am called to follow the laws, as we all are, and I will hope that each of us on council and in our community will listen to this point. This was sent to me today and it seemed fitting, excuse me, it seemed fitting. It's from Romans 13:1 through 7. "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God. Those that exist have been instituted by God; therefore, whoever resists the authorities resists what God has appointed, and those who resist will incur judgment. The rulers are not a terror to good conduct, but to bad. Would you have no fear of the one who is in authority? Then do what is good, and you will receive his approval; for he is God's servant for your good. But if you do wrong, be afraid, for he does not bear the sword in vain; for he is the servant of God, an avenger who carries out God's wrath on the wrongdoer. Therefore, one must be in subjection, not only to avoid God's wrath, but also for the sake of conscience. For because of this, you also pay taxes, for the authorities are ministers of God, attending to this very thing. Pay all what is owed to them, taxes are owed; revenue to whom revenue is owed, respect to whom respect is owed, honor to whom honor is owed." This is not meaning that I'm not working through every channel available to press for a plan that can be cautiously implemented at the county level and at the state level. I am doing that and I've done that the last couple of weeks. On Tuesday afternoon, I joined four other Clackamas County mayors for a press conference to express our desire for Governor Brown to expedite her plan for opening Oregon for business, empowering the counties or even empowering the cities to create and expedite a plan. During the interview, I was asked a question about how I felt about the restaurant opening and my statement did not come out as well as I would have liked. I was trying to express the terrible conflict we all feel as leaders between those who are vulnerable and frightened with health concerns. And I live that every day in my job, working in adult care. First, those who are just as vulnerable and frightened as they watch their livelihood evaporate. They look at their kids and wonder how they'll feed and clothe and shelter them. I get calls from those who are terrified or their loved ones, pardon me. I get calls from those who are terrified of what their loved ones catching the virus or coming down with it. I get calls from those who are one lease or loan payment away from losing it all because their business or business they work for are shut down. I get calls from those in our own town that have in the past, in the span of weeks, lost their business and we won't see them reopen. That's the heartbreaking conflict that we leaders feel. That's what I was trying to express in my comment. I stand by my position. We need some definitive leadership out of the state with a restart plan. Now we're going to achieve it. Or we need the freedom and responsible guidelines to work out our own at the county level or maybe even the state level. So I just wanted that, that piece to come across. Last week, I had, so that's that piece on that issue and hopefully people understand that Camden PD, so myself, Chief Smith, Amanda Ziber and our city attorney Jill Lindsay, spent a number of hours talking about what steps we would take if something were to happen or a business were to take the action of opening up. And we unfortunately had to do that. And I think what we determined in terms of the course of action to take was appropriate. And it was, it was an education piece. So that business cooperated, went back to doing it in their, their takeout. And I really do hope that we can move forward and that other businesses will do what we can to be successful through this tough time. Last week, I did engage in a call with Clackamas County Chair Bernard and mayors and city managers across the county. We had an update on the emergency operations center there at the county as well as had a conversation about the COVID virus. So it was interesting that the difference between no interventions being done versus interventions and that we have been able to flatten the curve in Oregon, which is great news. This week, I think that was officially came out today was we are, be able to have confirmed numbers by area code. So you'll be able to look those up. We also discussed last week what it would take to have the county present a plan to the governor's office if the county wanted to be allowed to open up. And we were, and here's what we'd have to show. So we'd have to show declining confirmed COVID cases. So right now Benton County is now doing direct testing and there, there is some thought that there should, there may be an expected surge in confirmed cases and making sure that they're able to manage hospitalizations if that does occur. The second thing that needs to happen is sufficient personal protective equipment. So that's masks, gowns, gloves, et cetera. There are still major supply interruptions to that right now that are trying to be figured out. The other piece is being able to handle surge capacity. We cannot overrun our hospitals and if we can open, can we scale back is the concern there as well. Robust testing and tracing. So right now, the testing number metric that they are using is that the county would need to test 1,255 people a week for, to meet that, that number or the piece to do that. Tracing, they've lowered the number of tracing. So if you are a confirmed case, they've lowered the amount of time that you may have spent with people to 15 minutes from 60 minutes. So that's pretty substantial amount of time if you're looking at trying to trace who you've spent time with, if you've been, if you've come down with COVID. So county last week was looking at possibly increasing staffing up to 120 to 130 people. And I think right now they're only at 30, was what I think the number they used last week. The other piece to be managed are the hardest-hit areas. So that's areas like homeless, nursing homes and migrant farm workers. So those are the categories that if the cities or counties wanted to make up a plan to present to the governor, that these are the areas that would need to be addressed and be, and those metrics be able to be met to share or to be able to get the governor to approve it, opening it up. And so that's, that was a piece that we talked about. Representative Drazen today spoke at our community update and elaborated even more on these numbers, which I've already put in there, but it's substantial pieces need to be met before the governor at this point will allow counties to open up. Doesn't mean we're not trying. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meets tomorrow. City budget meetings are beginning next week, so we'll be attending those. So if you, I think everyone got those emails or you orchestrated getting a printed copy picked up. So some city updates for everyone that I read earlier, but I'll put them on here as well. Safety and health measures have been implemented at all city facilities, including physical distancing at workstations, staggering work schedules, wearing masks around each other, et cetera. So we, and sign-in sheets for contact tracing. During April, we had limited planning submissions only to type one applications. So effective on Monday, we are now accepting all planning applications. Materials can be submitted electronically and planning staff are available to assist as needed. In preparation for reopening to the public, we are installing Plexiglas sneeze shields at all public counters. We will also install signage in public areas to encourage physical distancing of customers. Library staff are hard at work coordinating with other libraries in the county to finalize a plan for accepting and quarantining return materials and hopefully releasing hold soon. In the meantime, please check the library website for online programming. A reminder as we head into the nice weather this weekend, parks, the green spaces in our parks are open for the community to enjoy for walking, exercising pets and letting stir-crazy children run around. Park facilities, including bathrooms and playground equipment do remain closed at this time. I do want to share also lastly, some pretty positive things from our business community that's going on that I think is worth noting and letting people know. We've had businesses that have really had to make some pretty major pivots to their business plans and the things that they're doing to drive sales, to continue to be successful and hang on through all of this that I think they're worth calling out. So Camden Cinema instituted or started their mystery movie box. So if you're not familiar with that, it's $20 and you get a movie, I think candy, popcorn and some sodas. And then you can take home and watch a random movie based on your genre choice. Wayward Sandwiches have been doing, have been doing virtual wine tastings. Book Nook has been doing their boredom buster bundles, which has been very popular. Ebner's Custom Meats have been running almost daily barbecue specials and options. And then the Wild Hair has been running fully cooked family style to-go meals for pretty reasonable price. Other businesses have taken to partnering with her, like Swan Island Dahlia selling wooden shoe tulips at their site or businesses like Putty River Chocolate showcasing the Backstop Bar and Grill and other businesses. The city of Camden, we're moving forward with finding new life for the former library, which we've talked about tonight. Let's see, I just, I think we're at a point that we will be, some day in the future, we'll be able to look at this and look back on where we were. And I think Camden will point to all the good things that we have done and are doing in this community. The city's been working with the chamber to launch the hashtag Love Local Camden campaign, which suggests citizens buy gift cards, leave reviews online, order online, share businesses, social media posts and taking food out. So I just challenge all of, all of you watching and listening that please, as much as you can, every little bit helps, every dollar helps the business survive during this time. So please get out and do what you can when you can. So thank you for that. That's all that I have. We'll move into councillor comments and liaison reports and I'm going to start on my screen in the upper left corner. Councillor Burgey, anything?
I don't have anything on the liaison report. I would like to put a very big shout out to all of our first responders, police, fire, as well as our rescue team. I think they've all been doing a fantastic job of dealing with a very tough situation. I'd like to also throw a shout out to all of our business owners that we understand that these are some tough times. And we understand that, you know, without the normal hospital shutdown, it's really tough. But we're here with you guys and we're all in this together. We'll get through it and we'll come out stronger on the other side.
Thanks councillor Burgey. I appreciate that. Councillor President Dale.
Cub will not meet until next week. I just had a couple of follow-up questions for you, Mr. Mayor, on the county report. It sounded like 1,250 tests per week is Clackamas County's ratio we need to do.
Yes.
Is, do you know, is that mean the capability of doing that? Or that we are actively testing that many people that come through our hospitals or county health?
My understanding is that that is the actual number per week that we need to be testing.
Okay, so it's not just capability?
Right.
And on the traceability, the 15 minutes, so for example, if I come down positive, I'll need to come up with a list of people that I've been exposed to for as few as 15 minutes?
Correct. My understanding of tracing is that yes, you'll have to list where you've been and who you've been in contact with and for how long. And so that they can then go back and trace your connections and then reach out to those people and let them know that they may have been exposed to the virus.
Okay, great. Those two numbers have been kind of hard to search for and figure out what they really mean. So thank you. Appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, and that just came about, so when Representative Drazen was doing her update today for the Camden Community update that we've been doing, she kind of had fresh numbers, kind of hot off the press that she shared. And so I was kind of scribbling those down from her information today. And so yeah, those are relatively new, I think, at least within the last maybe 24, 48 hours.
Part of the dependency, of course, is that medical facilities have the available test to pull off that rate as well, right? That's the implied dependency.
Correct. And I haven't heard anything, the last number I heard about available tests in Oregon was 10,000. That was a week and a half, two weeks ago. So I don't know if, I haven't heard anything if that number has changed in terms of availability. So if these are, yeah, if these are the metric pieces, at least there's a metric piece because we didn't have that for a while. So that at least gives us context to be able to look at things and whatnot as we talk about how do we open back up and get back going.
No mention of a target infection rate this time around?
Not that I recall from what I saw this afternoon.
Just that it goes down.
Yeah, just, yeah, just that we're, I mean, thank you councillor Parker. Yeah, the flattening and decline, I mean, declining would be great. So, I mean, from what I've saw and seen, we've kind of hit that flattening. You know, we had, you know, what, two days this week, or tail end, tail end of last weekend and this week, two or three days with, you know, no COVID-related deaths, you know. So I don't, again, we constantly ask about what metrics are being measured? When we look at how do we argue for opening back up and what's that, what's that, what are those numbers?
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councillor Hansley?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councillor Spoon?
Just a couple of things. The Transit Advisory Committee still has those openings. We never closed them because the meetings just stopped, so we thought we may as well keep it open for the time being. So if anyone's still interested, the positions on the committee are still available and you can apply online. You can get the application online. I wanted to, you know, echo a lot of what everyone else is saying. I was excited this week to see wins come back and Coffee Doodle Do is opening next week. So if you recall them being closed, you can go back and visit them now and that's exciting and support them. exciting and support them. And then another local business, Brian, in addition to all the ones you named, that I think is being really inventive right now is Kona Ice. So they are doing, you can order online and they come to your house and stop by. They just do home deliveries. So we did that today and got some Kona Ice for the kids. So you can order online, you can even choose your flavors online if you want, but otherwise they can do it when they get there and you just pay online, so you don't have to exchange cash. And they'll come by and like you pick a half-hour window and they'll pop by in that time. So another exciting way, so you can follow them on social media. And then finally, I just wanted to wish all of the mothers in Canby Happy Mother's Day this weekend. It's an unusual one, and I know a lot of us might not be able to spend time with our mothers this year, particularly if they're at risk for immunocompromised. So I just hope that you all find a way to reach out and connect with your loved ones, and I wish you all the happiest Mother's Day.
Thank you, Council Spoon, and Happy Mother's Day to you and to Council Hensley.
Thank you.
Yes, and I know my wife is in the background, so, you know, it's, it is a tough job. I have three kids and oftentimes I joke that my wife has four, so.
And right now, they're also teachers on top of everything else.
Many of them are also now teachers, so, yeah, so thank you for calling that out. I appreciate it. Council Parker?
Well, a couple of things. First, a number of us should remember, Amira Stanley from the Canby Trans Alliance, she has some news, and she's given me permission to share it, that she and her partner have decided that they're going to move to Salem. So Salem's game is our loss. I particularly liked her form of citizenship, you know? She came to the council, she wanted something, she didn't get what she wanted, and she kept coming back in a civil and respectful way, educating us, and she changed me. She gave me some perspectives and understanding that I didn't have. So, Amira, thank you for the time you spent in Canby. You made a difference. As a member of the Fair Board, I thought I'd give you a couple of updates. We, one of the things the fairgrounds does have is a lot of room. And so we've been able to partner with the Clackamas County and the Sheriff's Office in arranging a drive-through food pickup. And that, at least right now, is going to be once a week. These have already been scheduled. The county folks will be coming in at 12:30 tomorrow. The families that have already been selected will be coming through an hour later, looping through and heading on out. So tomorrow's going to be the first time. I'll fill you in on that. The Fair Board has not yet decided what to do about this year's Clackamas County Fair and Rodeo. Of course, remember the Fair and Rodeo is the second week of August. St. Paul has, and Sisters have already canceled. Their events happen earlier in the year. Again, this is going to be a board decision, so what I'm about to say is just my one singular opinion. But what I've been doing, the equation I've been trying to figure out, is what does it take to get put together a fair? And the biggest single component is volunteers, that from ticket takers to cleanup, to guides and information, all of these jobs are done by volunteers. And most of them are older than me, so whether you're going to want to have exposed several hundred volunteers of a certain age to thousands of people is a consideration that we're going to have to decide probably in the next couple of weeks. To your discussion that you had, Mayor, about the weekly updates, I wonder if our city clerk, Melissa, might be able to cross-post that to the county, to the city's webpage? Because the presentation that both you and especially Representative Drazen gave was a detailed and technical explanation of what it is going to take for Clackamas County to be certified to reopen. So there was some very good information. From my position, I've told this to the mayor and to the city administrator, I want the city of Canby to be as aggressive as they can within the limits of the law as it is that day. And to that extent, I called up Clackamas County today and volunteered to be one of their trackers, figuring that a retired journalist and bureaucrat might know how to ask questions and enter information into a database. But the mayor is correct that right now, I think actually the number is smaller than what you said. It's actually, we have 15 people in our tracking, mainly doing venereal disease and hepatitis and that sort of thing. To expand it to the amount that would be necessary for a county of 400,000 would take about 60 people. So that's part of the process. If we want to participate in the process of opening up Oregon, it's going to take people to be participating in these elements that allow this thing to happen. And finally, just a small part about something Tim was asking about on the number of tests that are given, number of tests that are available. This stuff is changing by the hour. I just, I've heard a report on OPB that Benton County, Oregon, is now doing unlimited drive-through testings for anyone regardless of whether you have conditions or not. So that's kind of new news for me, of having optional testing. So stay tuned and be well.
Thank you, sir. Council Barwick?
Thank you very much. Apologize if I lag a little bit here. My internet is struggling to keep up. I have booted everybody off of their TV shows and now they're standing outside the window of my little cave here that I am in, kind of doing the open, open, open thing, ready to get back to a show. So apologize if I lag at all here. I don't have any reports, obviously the, you know, boards aren't meeting similarly to a lot of yours. But I just wanted to, I guess, encourage. Obviously, we're in a strange time and a lot of people have a lot of emotions that they may not be quite understanding how to handle. I just want to encourage everybody to continue to stay humble and stay kind and remember that what you say may be on a social media site sometimes cannot be taken back. So just be careful out there. Everybody is, you know, nerves are running high and I know that we all think things and say things and sometimes we regret it afterwards. I have, my wife is my sounding board. When I've wanted to make comments, she says, Sean, think about that before you say it, and I appreciate that. So just remember to give a little bit of grace and patience to people out there as we're all, you know, struggling and trying to figure out how to handle, you know, losses of business and losses of finances and for some people, losses of life, losses of home and all of that. So don't judge people based on what they're saying right now and let's all just be friends and be kind to each other. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Council Barwick. I appreciate that. Council Spoon, did you, you tagged me real quick, did you miss something?
Yes, I just wanted to remind people too, it occurred to me after I stopped, that the farmer's market is reopening this weekend, and I believe they'll be doing some drive-through farmer's marketing. So if that's something that you were looking forward to and the weather's going to be nice, the vendors will be out there and they're, and who save ways to adapt to the current situation. So that is coming back this weekend as well.
Great. And reviewing my notes, I left off a very important topic for us to discuss, and that is the question about the Independence Day celebration. Sorry, I apologize for that. I was going to save that for last and moved it down and totally moved it off my conversation list. We seem to have lost Council Parker in my viewing screen here. So, but we can at least start the conversation, I suppose. So 4th of July, Independence Day is right around the corner. We are two months, less than two months out, and there's a lot of, as Council Parker was alluding to, there've been a number of events that have already canceled their plans. So St. Paul Rodeo and fireworks, Fort Vancouver has canceled theirs. So the question and dialogue that we need to have is, we need to consider, do we need to consider canceling our event for our city? And yes, that's where we're at. Or do we move forward and try to have it? Keep in mind that much of the planning was put on pause with the start of the executive order and the virus spread. And so at this point, and Amanda, I know you're listening, so please jump in here, but the amount of planning that would take to get us going and get ready to do such an event would be a lot of state staff time. The other concern is, is with the governor extending the state of emergency and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't necessarily extend the stay home, stay healthy order, but it does play into that aspect, which means then that when we typically see several thousand people for the Independence Day celebration, we could, with the cancellation of other events, really be pushing unattainable social distancing numbers. So, Joe, Amanda, am I leaving anything out of at least pre-framing this initial conversation?
Well, just currently, the executive order, I think it's 20-12, calls for any sort of, oh.
If you guys are talking, you're muted, so.
Ah-huh. Let's see here. Oh. Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, I can now hear you, Joe.
And I'm going to admit, Council Parker as well, so hopefully he can join us momentarily. Executive order, I think it's 20-12, which was extended until July 6th, and that is kind of bluntly extended for 60 days. It was originally a 60-day order and it's become yet another 60-day order. I'm not sure it's going to last that long, but it's the one that says that any sort of grouping outside of your home of individuals for recreational purposes or otherwise is actually not allowed, it's disallowed unless you can guarantee at least six feet distancing. And so that's kind of the pertinent one. It's hard to read the tea leaves and know exactly if that's going to still stay, but that's the one that has the date connected to it and that's the one that has the limit on individuals going outside the home that seems to be pertinent here. And so it's hard to imagine that we could all guarantee that everyone's going to stay six feet away from each other with a massive event that draws thousands of people. And that's the kind of legal take on it. I know Amanda's here if she wants to talk about how much volunteerism we have to gear up in order to get this thing going and how many contracts we have to sign with different vendors and such.
Hi, good evening. This is Amanda. As Joe mentioned and as Councilor Parker mentioned earlier regarding summer events, we do often depend on volunteers, and I'm not sure that we would get the number of volunteers this summer for an event. A lot of people are very concerned about coming out. Additionally, I'm not sure we would get as many attendees, but I have faith in our staff. If it's something that you decide to pull forward, I think our staff can pull off just about anything. But I would be concerned about some challenges in doing that in the next 60 days and under the governor's orders. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Comments, questions, thoughts? Close yours all.
Brian, we have confirmation that Canby Fire volunteers have indeed canceled the fireworks display.
I do, I don't know, I don't believe we have confirmation of that yet. Amanda, I think they're, I think they're still up in the air in that piece?
Yeah, they, I think that they want to do what the city is doing, so they're waiting for us to decide what's going to happen with the Independence Day celebration before they make their absolute final decision.
Does that help, Council Dale?
Yes and no. We at least know it's not already done, right? You know, on an emotional level, I would trade our parade and our park gatherings in exchange to keep the fireworks. And the fireworks is the one that has, you know, the most reasonable chance of maintaining social distance across the acreage. Joe would have to comment on, under the current conditions, if such a gathering would violate the executive order, because there are caps and size in spite of social distancing. But I'd love to see the fireworks continue. I know we may have some interesting traffic logistic problems to deal with around township and 13th and such, because we would expect, I think, a pretty abnormally gigantic crowd coming into Canby, being one of the only ones around.
Yeah, that's, you know, Tim, you and I have talked about this and I shared that with Amanda as well, that I'm, I don't know, there's something, something about the Independence Day with fireworks and whatnot, and I too would like to see the fireworks still go off. I know that I did reach out to, let's see, there's Western Fireworks Display, but then there's also Western Fireworks. And so I reached out to them today and, you know, with the, you know, because Western Fireworks Display does most of the displays in the Northwest and really, you know, kind of west of the Mississippi and, you know, the number of cancellations that they have had and whatnot, they're, they usually are able to help with lots of in-kind donation to make the fireworks happen. And so I don't know what that looks like. That maybe be a conversation that we, that Amanda and I can have with the chief to find out what that looks like on their end. But yeah, at the end of the day, I think, you know, it's still going to come down to if we cancel, will Canby Fire volunteers follow suit? That I don't know. Anybody else have any input or thoughts either way? Council Parker?
Yeah, I'd like the fireworks as well, but that's not our program to vote on, so.
Right.
I've had, I've lived this every day now with us discussing what we can have out at the fairgrounds. And here's one of the issues that we haven't quite figured out. What do we do about bathrooms? The latest thinking is that they would have to be cleaned after each use. So that's one. Two, as Amanda pointed out, and as Greg Perez and I can tell you, that this city 4th of July event wouldn't go on without volunteers. And Greg and I are both over 60 and we're in a group that is being told, don't go around a bunch of people. So there'd be some question on whether it would be reasonable for me to even volunteer. So as much as I hate to see a stop in it, I think the most reasonable thing to do is to go ahead and pull the plug on it this year and do it earlier rather than later. Right now, we've got staff meeting every day, trying to round up volunteers. There's the question about getting contributions from sponsors who may not be in a financial situation to make those contributions this year. So my vote is to go ahead and suspend it this year with regret.
Thank you, Council Parker. Council Barwick?
Yeah, you know, I've gotten probably about a dozen or so messages, stuff from people saying, please don't let them cancel it, please don't let them cancel it. And so I struggle with balancing what's a smart decision and what people want. And I don't know that I know what my vote would be. I think if we could, if we could get a commitment from the fire department to continue to have the fireworks show, it'd be an easier decision to say, cancel the parade and everything else. I love the Independence Day celebration. It's actually one of the things that made me fall in love with Canby and part of the reason why I actually moved here was that thing. So I'm going to miss it if it's canceled this year. So I'm, I'm going to miss it if it's canceled this year. I don't know that I'm ready to make that decision yet. I would like to maybe get a little bit closer and see what happens over the next two weeks with any of the stay-home orders, but I think the writing's on the wall of what we're going to end up having to do with it. But I'm not ready to make that decision just yet, unless we can maybe see if we can get the fireworks to continue.
Good. Thank you. Counsel Spoon, did you have a comment?
I had a question. Because we haven't really seen any large-scale events since all of this started, do we have any information, are there going to be any adjustments or changes in ensuring large events during this period, like just logistically?
Sure.
Well, the governor, currently, it's an order that gatherings larger than 25 are not permitted. That's probably going to be relaxed, even if there's kind of overlapping orders, ones that you have to be able to guarantee six feet distance are also now in play with the cap at 25. I can't imagine they would keep a cap at 25 if you're in a later phase. But if it goes to 50 or if it goes to 100, that doesn't get you to the 5, 6,000 that we often see coming out for 4th of July, so. I don't know. That's the best guesses I can give.
Yeah, and then my other question was for Amanda, is if we did delay a couple of weeks in making a decision, does that give staff time to execute it? It sounds like it would be tight today. How does another two weeks' delay impact the actual execution of the event from a staff standpoint?
I think any delay is going to make it more difficult. The longer that we go, the more challenges we're going to have.
Anyone else have any input?
Is the concern getting vendors, getting bans? I know that these people would be hungry to work and would be chomping at the bit to sign on, so what is the concern as far as the planning perspective?
I think that a lot of people are waiting to see what we're doing, to see if they're putting in applications to be vendors or to participate in a parade. I don't know what the participation level has been to this point. I do know that what we've told everybody is if it is canceled, we can give their money back. I just think maybe it's just a bigger question of whether or not it's responsible to hold an event with thousands of people immediately following or while we potentially still have stay-at-home orders in place.
I couldn't agree with Counsel Varwig. I would like to, I would like to wait a couple of weeks, maybe the next meeting at least. I don't want to make a decision on this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Burge, thoughts? July 4th is a long ways away, but yet it's coming very quickly. I do not want to see the 4th of July celebration go away. I definitely do not want to see the fireworks go away. But at the same time, we have a large community of people that are susceptible. We need to be mindful of that. I kind of am in the same agreement as Counselors Varwig and Hensley, that if we can wait a few weeks and see if the numbers are starting to come down, maybe, maybe by July 4th, we'll be ready to open up and have something like this. I'd hate to put a nail in that coffin tonight and then things open up. So I'm a firm, I'm on the side of waiting a couple of weeks.
If it has any bearing on your decision tonight or not, I did receive just now confirmation from Chief Jim Davis that the fireworks have been canceled.
Oh, there's one nail. Well, and I do know from years past that here we are in May, about the only thing that is not nailed down, I think, is volunteers and parade entries. Is that safe to say, Amanda?
Yes, I think it is.
And so right now, we don't have really anything except a framework to move forward.
On behalf of staff, we will move forward with whatever direction you give us.
Counsel Parker?
Well, Brian, you kind of tiptoed up to this in the context of something else. This has been one of my concerns about some counties opening, some counties not. If you're in a county that is not open, you're going to go into a county that is. And, you know, it breaks my heart to see that the hotspot in this area is Marion County, primarily Woodburn. And they've canceled their summer activities, and probably would be pretty darn eager to come and see our events in Canby. So I think it's hard, hard for us to think about these events sometimes. They're not just Canby events, they are regional events for people to come in. And we are relatively low in this area. That's why people are encouraged about it. But there aren't going to be barricades on 99. And if you're living in an area that is completely tied down, and there's entertainment to be had in Canby, we're going to be having people show up from areas that have a statistically higher amount of COVID than we do. I feel a little mean saying that, but I think those are some of the logistics that we need to take into account, that if we're going to be, if we're going to be the place to be on 4th of July, we may have a lot of traffic in here from outside. And, but it looks like we got three votes to delay it, and I'll, I guess I'll live with that.
Well, yeah, we do, you know. I love this event. I love the day, and it's, this is another collateral damage item from, from the virus. You know? So is that, is that what, if I'm, am I, am I counting correctly? We've got three, three weights, three weight on it, and three, Counsel Spoon, are you on a more of a weight on it, or let's, let's pull the plug?
I'm comfortable waiting, if that's what people want to do. I think all of us know, looking at the data. My concern, my biggest concern is definitely people coming from the outside. And normally, they're welcome, and I meet every 4th of July, I meet people from a different town. So I know that that already happens, and I fear that if we're one of the only Independence Day celebrations occurring, it will happen to a larger degree. I don't see harm in waiting another couple of weeks. I don't think it's going to change anything. I put a lot of faith in Chief Davis at the fire department, and if he doesn't feel comfortable having the fireworks, it makes me nervous about the comfort level and the exposure. We'd be putting our first responders, exposing them to, you know, a spread of, if we have our event. So, I mean, I'm comfortable waiting. I don't think anyone in the city wants the event to not happen, but we also have to make a responsible decision. So if there's a glimmer of hope in waiting two weeks, I'm happy to do that, so we can all come to the same decision together. I just, I fear that the writing's on the wall, and I don't want to, I don't want to inconvenience staff anymore, have them do work at taxpayer expense that, that we ultimately know will probably be undoing at the same time. So I'm comfortable waiting. I don't really think it's going to change anything. I want the event to happen, but if Chief doesn't feel comfortable doing the fireworks, I don't know how it's a responsible decision on our part to have the event, which is arguably even more densely populated with higher attendance, because a lot of people watch the fireworks from their home, but the parade is just wall-to-wall people. So that's just my take. But I'm totally comfortable waiting two weeks, too, to make a decision. Part of me just hopes that everything will change in the next two weeks, and we'll be able to have it, but...
So I'm just, well, yeah, these are, these are tough calls, you guys. And again, I think what people are realizing, that this is, this is, these are the things that we are faced with in these chairs. I mean, you think of, this is, this is a major decision, but it's not, right? But we are talking potentially, yeah, do we all of a sudden become a hotspot? There's a lot of unknowns, and that's where sometimes it's about making the decision and moving forward, and it is, and that's, that's the decision point. I have concerns with it, and I look at this group, just the seven of us, and it would take all seven of us to be involved as volunteers to make the day, or that portion of the day come off with some level of execution. You know, Counsel Parker is part of the vulnerable class. Counsel, Counsel President Dale is part of that, representing the compromised portion of the group with his situation. I am as well, for personal reasons and for my day job. That would be really irresponsible for me to do an event and then show up at work where I've got a building full of residents, and that might be the case. So right there, we've, in essence, wiped out half of this group from a volunteer standpoint. So I, I'm going to put a proposal out on the table that maybe some faction of this group, or a conversation with other people within our community, that we create a parade, a car parade of some kind, that can maybe drive through the city, in, or trailers or whatever. That way, it's not compacted into downtown, but that maybe trapes throughout the town, pockets of neighborhoods, you know, whatever, so families can come out in their front yards and attempt something in that regards. So I'm going to put that out on the table as an idea. I'm willing to, you know, come out and be involved in a parade in that fashion, and be part of that conversation to maybe expand the route through greater Canby versus concentrated in a downtown. It's an idea, I'll put it out there. And then I have another thought, but I'll do that after Counsel Varwig makes his.
You know, as you're, as you're talking, that was what was going through my mind. So I think we were on the same wavelength there, because it was, I, I thought of like, well, what if we could just do a parade where people don't congregate, you know, like a front yard parade? Or I had the joy tonight of being able to, many of you know Ron Swar, the pastor over at Canby Forest Square, he had a birthday parade tonight, and everybody dressed up in Dodger blue, except for me, because I'm not a Dodger fan and never will be, and don't want to embarrass myself like that. But everybody dressed up and did this parade around the church parking lot over there for his birthday, and he just stood out there and watched. I thought it was fantastic to be part of that. And so maybe if people could, you know, if we, as you said, extend the parade route and go through some of, you know, the main streets of most neighborhoods, or by people's homes, you know, people could step out in the front yard, or, you know, just out on the street and enjoy it. If there's something, if we don't just shut it down 100% and say, it's over, not doing it, nothing's happening, but if we can offer an alternative, or even some kind of virtual fireworks show, I don't know, I think I'd be okay with that as well, and kind of in place of it.
Counsel Spoon, and Counsel Parker?
Yeah, I think that adapting is, is what a lot of people are having, it's what our businesses are having to do. And if we can find a way to adapt and celebrate, I think that I can get behind that. I think also, too, we have a really inventive and resourceful community, so maybe we could take a few days and take suggestions from the community. People might have better ideas than the seven of us can come up with. On other ways, we might celebrate that, that would allow us to keep that part of our town together in these trying times. I would love to see what the community could come up with. Maybe we could have a little contest or something, and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. Counsel Parker?
Well, last year's...
What was that, Counsel Varwig?
Well, I said, or, you know, in the evening, we could display last year's fireworks show, if anybody has video of it, on a CTV5.
Okay. I like that. Everyone will be tuning into the Boston Pops on TV. Counsel Parker?
Well, as most of you know, I live right across the street from the staging area of the parade. And there's 45 people from the Canby High School Orchestra who have not been practicing. There's 25 people from the Allegra Dance Studio who have not been practicing. So what I would suggest, if we, if we're going to kick the can down the road, and my preference would be to save the poor staff another couple of weeks of having to tow this rock down the street. But if we're going to do it, how about taking the approach that we've done with the fair, is saying, not what do we want to do, but what resources do we have to start with? Mayor, perhaps you could tomorrow work with the city and come up with a set of questions. Could you call the high school? Find out if anybody is going to be able to be available to be in a parade. Of calling Allegra, saying if there's any way that they could participate. Of Jamie and Calvin's list of volunteers from last year, of just doing a sample call-down and seeing how many of last year's volunteers will be available this year. At least then, we have some data to plug into our decision-making. Right now, we're talking about aspirational, but there comes this point where we have to start putting the blocks together. I forget how much is sponsorship and donations? Are those companies able to make the same level of contributions again this year? And, you know, the conundrum of, do we open the bathrooms at Wade Park? And what is the cleaning frequency that would be required for that? So there, there are some known knowns that we can come up with, I guess, of putting our staff back to work on this, if, if, if we're not ready to make a decision this week. But I would suggest we start with our resources. And then if we need to have a meeting in two weeks and take a look and say, well, orchestra hasn't been practicing for the past 45 days, Allegra hasn't been practicing for 45 days. We don't want to put 25 little girls together six feet apart to march through the streets? I don't know. But at least let's, let's try and do a call-down and see what resources would even be available.
So thank you for that, Counsel Parker. So I, I will, I will chat with staff about that, and I'm actually going to cut our timeline in half. We got a week to figure this out. So we'll, we'll maybe pursue some of those pieces there, Counsel Parker. If somebody wants to maybe throw out that idea, I don't know, maybe we, you know, CanbyNow survey, or I'm sure the Herald and CanbyNow podcast might be tuning in right now, and might be able to create some conversation around the idea of, you know, like, the idea of a, almost a change and adapt and innovate Independence Day celebration in the city of Canby, and what that could potentially look like on a, I don't know, we'll call it guerrilla marketing concept. So, all right. We'll give it, we'll give it a week, and I will reach out to everybody and ask the question again. Fair enough? Okay. Amanda, is that, I know that that kind of maybe is a bit of a cheek... Amanda, does that, I know that that kind of maybe is a bit of a cheek fighter on that one, we'll, we'll talk more tomorrow. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, okay, thank you and I'll have Jamie and our economic development staff ready as well.
Great, thank you. All right, I think I got everyone's liaison reports, we had that conversation. I need to, I need to approve the consent agenda. Who wants to do that?
Hear me, can you hear me now? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move for passage of the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of the April 15th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting and the April 22nd, 2020 Special Call Meeting.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Council President Dale, seconded by Council Hensley first and then two others, to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of the April 15th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting and the April 22nd, 2020 Special Call Meeting. All those in favor? I see six hands, anyone opposed? Passes 6-0. Next up, resolutions and ordinances. First up is Resolution Number 133, a resolution adopting budget appropriation transfers for the 2019 through 2020 fiscal year. And I believe we've got Julie Blums here to help us go through this.
Good evening.
Explain it and then answer any questions we may have.
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. It's good to see you guys, haven't seen you in a while. What we've got tonight is a resolution to do budget appropriation transfers. We typically do this once or twice a year, make mid-year adjustments and we've managed to make it till May before we had to do our first one, so that's a good news. We just have a few. In our planning department, we've had far more traffic studies than we thought we would need. With those comes a cost, there's also revenue that comes in to, to cover those. In my department specifically, we had a bill for an OPEB valuation, which is part of something we have to do for our annual CAFR that was unexpected, but we didn't really have a choice, we have to pay it. And our audit costs are going up just slightly this year because we're doing a one-year extension on our contract. With the cemetery, we talked about this at our Budget Committee meeting the last time, that we're spending more time in the cemetery than what we thought we would. We've had a lot of weekend burials and that sort of thing, so we're just kind of transferring around where the, those people are. And then, the big item is in our not allocated section, under Personal Services, we typically budget about $75,000 in this line item for retirements and payouts when people leave. This year, in our retirements, we're up to $200,000 in payouts, so we need to increase that line item to cover those. And then, in the Materials and Services line, we have, I threw in $15,000 to go towards current year expenses for COVID items. We will put in for reimbursement on the things that we can, but for now, we still have to have the authority to spend that money. And we'll be transferring from other departments that have vacancy savings, that sorts of things, so the, the net sum is zero to the general fund. We're not gonna spend any more than what we already have, the authority, we're just moving it between departments.
Great, thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments or clarifications from, from the group? Council Parker?
I'll just give a little bit of context, having done this 11 years in a row now. It's, planning 14 months ago for what was going to happen today is, is not a perfect science, so we do expect budget reconciliations, but I gotta say, this is about one of the smallest many reconciliations I've ever seen. So, way to go.
Yeah, usually we've done a couple of these throughout the year to shore up some things, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give, give Julie and staff credit for keeping, keeping numbers about right where we thought they would be, so thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
I'm making a motion if you're ready.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 1333, a resolution adopting budget appropriation transfers for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Second.
The motion has been made by Council Varwig and seconded by Council Hensley to approve Resolution Number 13, 13, 33, a resolution adopting the budget appropriation transfers for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. All those in favor? Sorry, I mean, I'm seeing six yeses, anyone opposed? Well, all right, that carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll see you guys next week.
Pardon me?
I will see you next week.
Yes, Julie, thank you. It's good to hear from you. Next up is Ordinance Number 1523, an ordinance amending Camby Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, Fire Prevention Code, second reading. So, we went over this at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. I was just, again, just tightening up our code and adopting changes from, yeah, from the fire district. Anything, Amanda, that we needed to address on that at all, or update, or elaborate on?
Not necessarily, this is Joe, I was just closer to the mic. This was housekeeping to try to take the old dates out of the law so that it updates when this, general practices and safety standards change.
Correct, thank you, sir. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 1523, an ordinance amending Camby Municipal Code, Chapter 18, 8.16, Fire Prevention Code.
Motion has been made by Council President Dale and seconded by Council Hensley to approve Ordinance Number 1523, an ordinance amending Camby Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, Fire Prevention Code, second reading, roll call vote.
Council Berge? Council Berge?
Yeah.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Council President Dale?
Aye.
Council Varwig?
Aye.
Council Spoon?
Aye.
All right, motion passes 6-0. Next ordinance is number, or next piece is Ordinance Number 1524, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with R.L. Reimers Company for the 2020 wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier improvement project and declaring an emergency. Again, this is, yeah, second reading for this one. Again, it's our repairs and whatnot for, yeah, primary clarifier of a wastewater treatment plant, so we're looking for the amount of $1,274,775 to do some upgrade and changes. Any additional questions that have come up from the last meeting for city staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, we've already addressed emergency declarations, so I will propose the motion. I move to approve Ordinance 1524, authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with R.L. Reimers Company in the amount of $1,274,775 for construction of the 2020 wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier improvement project and declaring an emergency.
Second. Motion has been made by Council Hensley and seconded by Council Spoon to approve Ordinance Number 1524, authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with R.L. Reimers Company in the amount of $1,274,775 for construction of the 2020 wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier improvement project and declaring an emergency. Roll call vote.
Council Berge?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Council President Dale?
Aye.
Council Varwig? Council Varwig?
Aye.
Council Spoon?
Aye.
All right, motion passes 6-0. Next up is Ordinance Number 1525, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Curran MacLeod Incorporated, consulting engineers for engineering services to complete improvements to South Ivy Street sanitary sewer collection system and declaring an emergency, second reading. Who's, what, can someone, what's the update on this one?
Joe? Are you asking, yeah, are you asking for a little bit of clarification on this one?
Yeah, just, again, just a quick, brief recap from a couple of weeks ago for the viewing audience.
Well, and so this is the engineering services for the sanitary sewer improvements to South Ivy. Part of, you know, a bigger project, obviously, where eventually we're going to be doing the streets and the curbs and the overlay to the street and then we're gonna eventually be taking over the street from the county, so this is kind of a long time coming. Curran MacLeod is our engineer of record for the city, has been for a long time, and he's proposing to do these services for the $75,500 for designing and the construction phase engineering services, so it is staff's recommendation that we go ahead and give this the, the second reading vote and that you pass.
Mr. Mayor, the E clause has already been addressed, so I move to approve Ordinance 1525, authorizing the city administrator, interim city administrator is how that should read, to execute a contract with Curran MacLeod Incorporated in the amount of $75,500 for design and construction phase engineering services for reconstruction of the South Ivy Street sanitary sewer and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Motion has been made by Council Hensley and seconded by Council Varwig to approve Ordinance 1525, an ordinance authorizing the city, the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Curran MacLeod Incorporated, consulting engineers for engineering services to complete improvements to South Ivy Street sanitary sewer collection system and declaring an emergency. And roll call vote.
Council Berge?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Aye.
Council President Dale?
Aye.
Council Varwig?
Aye.
Council Spoon?
Aye.
Great, that passes 6-0, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is discussion around Ordinance Number 1526, an ordinance authorizing the city of Camby to enter into a contract with FCS Group for the completion of an economic opportunities analysis and I think, is this the one we're taking the emergency clause off of, Joe?
Yeah, and pardon us for, for having that on there. This is one of those where it was a grant and so we wanted to get going on it. We got it back in November and we wanted to make sure and get it in front of you, but the idea is that this truly isn't an emergency and so we, we can just take the emergency, declaring an emergency language out of the title of it and have it come up for second reading and then have it go into effect 30 days after the second reading.
Great, thank you. So, there is no emergency clause on this one, but basically what we're looking at here is, we were awarded a technical assistance grant from the DLCD back in 2019 and so this agreement will allow us to complete an economic opportunity analysis with assistance from a consulting firm, where we'll be able to perp the economic opportunity agreement, sorry.
Analysis.
Analysis, thank you. Will provide us with six items, community, economic development, vision and objectives, economic trends analysis, site suitability analysis, inventory of suitable sites, so for commercial and industrial land, make sure whether what our supply will meet the demand that we have, assessment of potential, and then recommendations from the consultants. So, this is pretty significant piece for us as we're looking down the road to, for growth and we're looking at future planning. So, this is a, a great piece to have for us as we start looking at doing that over the next couple of years. Sorry, I got my screen blocked. Council Parker, yes?
Well, we should also add that as we move ahead in the next couple of years to updating our comp plan.
Yes.
This is an element that we can plug in. It's gonna save us a little bit of money, so there's that. The other thing that I would really encourage staff to do is to make sure we don't get last year's consultant report. The world has changed and there's going to be a different economy and different opportunities. And I don't know this consultant, but there were years where I did read consultant reports and my favorite was always when they didn't do search and replace and get all of the last client's names out. So, I hope we get a, an analysis of the economy that is emerging. I mean, if we actually do that, then this is really gonna be somebody else's money well spent, even though it's not ours, I still think we should, we should try and squeeze out of it as much of a vision for the future economy as we can.
Thank you, sir, I agree. Any other comments? I will take a motion if not.
Mr. Mayor, I move for Ordinance 1526, authorizing the city of Camby to enter into a contract with the FCS Group for the completion of an economic opportunities analysis.
Sorry, who seconded that?
Second.
Motion made by Council President Dale and I'm giving the second to Council Berge to approve Ordinance Number 1526, an ordinance authorizing the city of Camby to enter into a contract with FCS Group for the completion of an economic opportunities analysis and declaring an emergency and to come up for second reading on May 20th, 2020.
Not declaring an emergency.
Sorry, you're correct. Not declaring an emergency. So, sorry, motion has been made to approve Ordinance Number 1526, an ordinance authorizing the city of Camby to enter into a contract with FCS Group for the completion of an economic opportunities analysis to come up for second reading on May 20, 2020.
And when that comes up, I will make sure that the declaring an emergency is certainly excised from that copy.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I see six hands. Although, anyone opposed? That passes 6-0. Next up is Ordinance Number 1527, an ordinance authorizing mayor and city administrator to enter into a contract with Bird Farms for wastewater sewage sludge removal and repealing ordinance 1513, our first reading. So, our annual conversation of removing sludge, our wastewater, yes.
Our favorite one.
Oh, yes.
That's the term for what it really is.
Literally loading it up and driving it out of the city. So, is it, Joe, is my, is there anything we're missing from this conversation?
Oh, no. We're missing bad. We're missing battery? Oh, my goodness, okay.
Oh, no.
Do you have him on there?
I'm getting him right now. I'm just going to tell him it was a malfunction.